We're going to reconvene this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education. We started at six o'clock for our organizational meeting. And thank you for joining us this evening. Clearly, we've changed seats. I was elected the board president earlier this evening. I will now be serving as our vice president. And we look forward to serving the board this year. We now have superintendent's comments.
Just really brief, just glad everybody back in school after the holiday break and getting ready for a fantastic 2018 as we roll into the second semester of the school year.
Okay, editor comments? Comments tonight? We just finished up our audit of our fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017. I'm having to report it was between audit again. So congratulations to the staff that all helps make that all happen. So just to report that we have another clean audit for the year. So very good. Congratulations.
All right, moving on. We have our first student spotlight where we get to recognize Lyndon Everly.
Good evening, men and women. Welcome to Lakota Board. So you know Lyndon's been loving the path of your year. Today's student spotlight is Lyndon Everly. I'm going to go to the website. Lyndon has made quite a name for himself on South Dakota field as he's often been used for at West. He led greater winning conference in gold and is the only West Conference member to be a four-time All-GNC player. Lyndon was game player of the year for not only the GNC but also Southwest Ohio G1. This fall, Lyndon was selected as one of thirty-eight boys to play on the United South Dakota State Fall High School Boys All-American team. Lyndon traveled to Orlando to play against the annual games of the summer cycle. Please welcome Lyndon Everly.
So first thing I'd like to say is thank you for inviting me out here, speaking in front of you. It is a huge honor to me and the whole soccer program over my four years. I work hard and everything. So here's one thing first. I assume I'm wearing the boot. I got surgery about two and a half weeks ago on my ankle. They removed the bone. That's been fractured since eighth grade year. So all through high school, I've been playing through this. So yeah, so first thing I'd like to start off with is just talking about my development. So freshman year, I'm trying out everything. So Coop comes up to me with great news that I made varsity. Me and my friend made varsity as freshmen. So that was what I was hoping for freshman year. Like that on my club team, there's one of three players that made it their freshman year. Everybody else made either the freshman team or debut. So obviously, the outcome is huge deal. So then we actually, this is very coincidental for you. So I, I would choose jersey numbers. And as a freshman, you were the last person to choose jersey number. I choose number thirteen. Thirteen was worn by Gaywell, which I don't know if any of you board members know who that is. He went to Brown to play soccer. He, he wore that number the year before me, before I picked it. And Coop and another senior come up to me and tell me that that, all right, it's going to be big shoes to fill. So that just fed into my fire right there. So when I go home, I open up all my gear. And in my gear, I find Catherine's van from when he used to play. And it was just in there, just, just so happy to be in there. So it just was almost like a foreshadowing moment to my high school career there. So sophomore year was just another year of development. I'm just learning the process and everything. And then junior year came and I, I felt like I was on fire and I was flying through the field and everything. And with Coop's help, everything, and just trusting in this process, I was able to achieve what I wanted that year. I got many awards that I never thought I would have. But thanks to the team and thanks that I was more of a team player than I was an individual coming to get to where I was. And then senior year came and before I actually started the senior season, I got an email saying I'm on the watch list that I'll be on this All-American watch list. So I have this over my shoulders. I have this ankle that I tweaked about or somewhere in preseason. So I'm not playing the preseason games. And I'm like, what am I going to do? Like, am I going to be able to finish this season? Am I going to do what I want to do? So towards the beginning of the season, I'm doing what I want, getting some goals, and I don't score for a little bit. I'm just like, well, what's going on here? So I, I just think to myself for a while, I'm just like, I'm just, I'm not being a team player. I'm trying to do this for myself. I, I go out there, I'm just like, I need to do these things, score goals and all these other things. So once I was able to just become one with myself to understand that I should not be individual on the field, I was able to build a team. That's when I had success. And that's why I'm here today because I just, I just felt that I just needed to play as more as a team than myself. And so then another important thing is I'm four goals away from making the career record. We play East. I scored three goals. Probably my most memorable game of my life. And then I scored a sixtieth career goal and it's probably the most important thing. Well, not the most important thing. One of the most memorable things of my life is we keep the soccer ball. Sixtieth career goal. I have all the players on the team sign the ball. Just one of the most unbelievable nights for me. And so, yeah. So the experience in Orlando, going to Orlando to play the game, I'm really, like, December fourth, playing in like seventy degree weather, uh, something. So that was a great experience. So then a few weeks later, after they're doing the first team all-state, great lakes all-region team, so then here comes my holy grail. The United Soccer Coach is All-American. So I made that team. I'm, it's just huge relief. What's very interesting about this is that my father also got this award. And I'm in my grandparents' house. We live in North Carolina. And I just see all these high schools. And I see this one that says NSCAA of High School American Mark Everly. So I've always seen that. I'm just like, I want to be there one day. So it's huge relief and just extremely honored to have gotten that award. So, yeah. So after high school, I plan to attend Wright State University, play soccer there, business in, major in business finance. And just one of the most, one of the cool things about going there is I'll be roommates with my best friend who goes to Saint Max's, but that's whatever. So, yeah, and then I got like five little guys on my team going there and it should be fun time. The next four years will be a lot. Questions? Oh, sorry. Oh, one more thing. So I also just, I actually just found out yesterday that I got nominated for the year in Ohio. So.
That's right.
So I'll be in this group for like another month and a half. I start physical therapy next Wednesday. So, yeah, I'm going to check. I don't know. I mean, I'm not really sure how I'll get back on the field. It'll be something soon, next two months.
Did you do all the long, did you get that done?
Yes, we've gone, we've gone to Beacon, we get x-rays, and it's never changed. It's just, it's my phone. So it is about time. I've got to remove, just want to get them before college.
Lyndon, how did your, your academic achievement, how was it impacted by athletic success?
Um, so my academics, I've been able to get honor. I mean, I've been able to sustain, fill in the GPA. So how it's impacted my athletics, it's helped open doors for me to play college soccer, stay close to home. I, I didn't play, I mean, I guess the Division One soccer that people want to play. So I feel like that's definitely opened the door for me. And just glad that I've had Coop and my family to help push me because it's, it's always gone, like school, family soccer, who would always win. So I've always put that first and gone from there.
I think your personal story shows a lot of determination and grit. And we wish you well. We would love to hear.
Thank you.
How far do you want to take the soccer path?
As far as I can get every day. Once I get out of the boot, I'm, I'm only grinding, me getting there, I want to get, I mean, Wright State is, it's send a few guys to the MLS. So I hope to follow those footsteps. As you guys might know, Nick Haywood came through, uh, plays for TMC. They just won the MLS Cup. And that's pretty sweet. So just to hear that, I'm just in the shadow of one of the players that's come to this program and has taken it all the way to his dream, his, his hope. So.
Where did you bring the names to that?
So I brought my parents, my mother, Krista Everly, and my father, Mark Everly.
Congratulations to you, but also you too as well.
I have played soccer at West Point as well. So we should follow in the strong legacy of soccer players here as well. So if we could come up and we'll take the picture. And if you have a house, it's our boys who are doing the job. I love the mantra of school, family, soccer. I love the. Those my kids had, those my kids had as teachers, that was junior. We also had a lovely event this evening. A recognition and word is for it, but she wasn't going to join us this evening, so we will not be doing that. So we'll move forward with public comment. And we have some votes we already signed in, so I will have them come up first. First, the sign-up chief, we have Lori Daniel. And then after her will be Rhonda Strauss. So if you'd like to get that.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lori Daniel. I'm at forty-three thirty-five Cross Creek in the North County. As a resident and parent of Lakota students, I'm here to express my thoughts on transgender policy five thousand. To be clear, I believe that every person has value and worth regardless of their beliefs. I'm empathetic towards our LGBT students. At the same time, I believe every student has the right to privacy and safety when using the restroom and locker room. I believe the people who wrote this policy are approaching it from the wrong angle. The policy is far too broad and infringes on the rights of the majority of students to feel safe and have privacy. Policy five thousand broadly oversteps the authority of both the district and the board and tramples parents' rights. It also opens the district up to legal action on several points. There's a simple, common sense solution that respects every student equally. And that would be to install one or two individual, single-use restrooms for restroom and locker changes. Any student or visitor may use the individual restroom, thereby, thereby removing any perceived stigma entirely. Otherwise, students use the bathroom that matches the sex on the birth certificate. Walnut Hills High School has already done this. Single-use restrooms would respect the needs and rights of transgendered students without infringing upon the rights of others. This also reduces opportunities for other students or visitors to abuse the policy. To be clear, I'm not referring to transgender population, our transgender population. I am more concerned about those who would take advantage of easy access to any restroom for any reason. I know several Lakota West students who are concerned that some of their peers will take advantage of this policy. With all of the news coverage on sexual harassment and abuse of women recent months, it should be abundantly clear that we don't need to make it easier for men to have access to young women or children in vulnerable situations. All of my students are Lakota athletes. One of my children was in the locker room when a male athlete came into the girls' locker room while they were changing one day because he thought it was funny. The entire team was mortified. They were angry and felt violated. It is difficult enough for any student to be in junior high and high school without the added stress of a member of the opposite sex coming into what is traditionally men have said is face for them. Furthermore, I was at a Lakota West basketball game when a male student walked into the women's room just after I walked out. Another parent, sorry, I lost my place here. You can tell I'm a little bit nervous. So be here with me, please. Another parent saw him, followed him in and called him out. He was not transgender. These types of situations increase the odds of sexual abuse and intimidation of our children by those misusing this policy. I am confident that Lakota will be held liable if such a tragedy should occur because the board refused to respect the rights of all Lakota students. If a student is bold enough to try this with parents standing around, how many, how many will attempt it when there isn't a staff member or parent there to see them? It would be very easy for someone to come in and gain access who shouldn't be there. There aren't enough staff members to oversee every restroom twenty-four seven. This places our students' safety at risk and our district at risk of lawsuits. There is a solution that respects all Lakota students and reduces Lakota's liability that is the individual, single-use facility. This is the best way to address this problem in a manner that is fair and respects every student. Finally, I would like to request that Lakota include non-transgender students and their parents as they work to shape this policy moving forward. Pardon?
I'm almost finished.
I would be happy to help in that capacity. While we have compassion for the LGBT community, the best solution will respect all Lakota students and consider how they are entitled. I urge the board to move forward in a manner that respects every student. And I thank you for your time.
Rhonda, and I feel to say at the beginning, if you could please state your name, address, and then when I hear your comments, two, three minutes, and it'll show a timer on the screen.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Rhonda Strauss. I live at fifty-eight twenty-two Hemlock Courts, Liberty Township. I have four kids in the district. I'm here tonight to also voice my opposition to the proposed transgender, open bathroom, locker room, and sports policy. I'm not trying to offend anyone, but this proposal is offensive to me. These kids have chosen to live a certain lifestyle. Those choices have consequences, and it is not the job of this district or our students to accommodate lifestyles. Forcing the rest of us to adapt is not fair. By adapt, I mean our students having given up their privacy and safety at school. I'm not against these kids or their choices. I'm against forcing the rest of students to bear the burden at school. I'm also concerned that students will be penalized for not using the correct pronouns as suggested in this policy. Also, how do you teach students in science class that sex is determined by chromosomes but then implement a policy where sex can be chosen? And if someone chooses to be the opposite sex, the teachers and other students have to go along with it or they're accused of bullying and discrimination. I am concerned about whether Lakota wants to remain a top-rated school district or if it wants to be a social experiment. This is opening Pandora's box. My daughters and every other student deserves to go to school and have an expectation of privacy and safety in the bathroom and locker rooms. All of my kids play sports at Lakota. How do you tell my daughters that no way little male teacher or coach or fellow male high school student entered her restroom? If you take away the black and white and make everything gray, which this policy does, you are opening the door for discomfort, mischief, and assault. All of these possibilities, all of these are possibilities, and there's no recourse to get someone out of the bathroom. My daughters don't want this. Why doesn't their discomfort count as much as the kids who opt to be a different sex? I saw on Twitter that during a recent insertist day, teachers had a work session on teen anxiety. Was this policy discussed? Sharing bathrooms and locker rooms with the opposite sex against their will is the epitome of teen anxiety. Will the board be voting again on this policy or is it now up to the new department established by Mr. Miller? It seems this minority group is getting more rights and more attention than these other sixteen thousand five hundred kids who are not transgender. The board released a statement last month after this policy was voted down, ensuring that transgender kids, that their rights were intact. Now a new department has been set up. Who is looking out for the other sixteen thousand five hundred students and their rights? Finally, have you thought about the financial implications to this district? If this is forced to nurse the students, be prepared for lawsuits, families to move, parents opting out of sports, students choosing private schools, and levies to bail. Lakota has everything to lose here. Thank you very much.
And Rusty Jesse will be up.
Hi, I'm Colleen Pyren, sixty-two eighty-two Foxwood Court. Last month, I spoke in favor of the gender identity and expression policy presented for the school board's approval but disappointingly rejected. The policy protects the rights of all students regardless of gender identity or expression. While Lakota's current anti-harassment policy does protect these students from harassment, families and community members in the We Are, We Wear White Committee know current policy is insufficient to protecting the rights of our transgender and gender non-conforming students. There is a great deal of misunderstanding about the needs of these students. One of our goals is to clarify these needs, dispel rumors and misinformation, and ensure that measures are in place to guide educators, school staff, and fellow students in supporting all students. The policy sets standards through which staff can better accommodate needs with the protection of a district policy as the basis for their decision. This month, I'm here to say thank you. Thank you to the community who came to show their support for the students. Thank you to the board members who listened and shared all of their views that will allow us to move forward to create a permanent policy of inclusion. We must assure that all students have the right to privacy, respect, and consistent protocols throughout the district through which needs are assessed and met. Thank you also to our superintendent, Van Miller, and others who have created the Lakota Outreach Diversity and Inclusion Department. It was stated in the Journal News that the department's responsibilities will include, this is long, reviewing current administrative guidelines and procedures already in place that do protect Lakota's most vulnerable students. They will collaborate with staff, students, and content experts to study current practices and then introduce measures that help ensure district-wide consistency and transparency in implementation. This is the department decide for all of our students, all of our students in our large and diverse district. The article continues to state that the new inclusion and diversity department will recommend possible changes to Lakota's current policies addressing transgender students' rights, but not in the near future. We wear white will continue to work toward our goal of a permanent policy, proudly working with the Lakota Outreach Diversity and Inclusion Department. You support our students and we will support you. To the board, please know that we have heard you. We understand that there are questions and concerns about the policy as written. We agree that any policy accepted by the district must protect the needs and rights of all students, ensuring equal access to educational opportunities, programs, and activities. Let's work together to make the gender identity and expression policy a reality. We wear white and we are Lakota.
Rusty Jesse, and then I have Kevin Tinsley next.
Good evening. My name is Rusty Jesse. I live at six-five sixty-four Justice Lane. And I saw Ben at the Y. He said he wouldn't come in tonight. So anyway, I wanted to put my comments by talking about, you know, I was really disappointed last month in how the district handled this entire thing. I felt this was hidden from the public. I've heard about it on seven hundred WLW at lunch. I had to do research. I didn't even come up here to speak last month because I didn't want to get up here and, you know, make any of it myself by saying, you guys didn't do something when I had six mad emails home that I didn't read. Well, that's not the case. None of our friends at Point on Facebook had ever heard of this thing. I showed up. I couldn't even voice my objections because I did not have, I had the time to do research. So I am, I vouch you, I object. Now, I would like to thank Linda O'Connor publicly for setting her foot last month. What was that in? And that policy was a pro-attempt at anything instructive. It was riddled with holes. If any of you were here, or you saw, you watched the meeting, the discussion afterwards, she held up the document, that by our legal counsel said, this is garbage. It had nothing but red marks on it. Red marks, if you're in school, that means you're going to flunk, right? Okay. You know, I was sitting back there and the debate reminded me of Nancy Pelosi's famous statement on Obamacare. We got to pass the law before we read the law. And I thought this was just ask something and we'll figure it out later. No, no. Again, thank you, Linda. Finally, as others have mentioned, sexual harassment and assault is a big deal. The NEA published an article titled "The Secret of Sexual Assault" by Cindy Long on December fourth of last year. In it, she stated that the AP found that seventeen thousand sexual assaults were committed at schools in the United States of America between two thousand eleven and two thousand fifteen. Those are the ones that were reported. Sexual assault and harassment does happen at Lakota schools too. We should not make it any easier for it to happen. And as the parent of an eighth-grade girl in the district, I am strongly opposed to any policy that will allow anatomical males in the restroom with my little girl and any anatomical females in the boys' restroom. My daughter is opposed to it as well. I don't want the locker room opened. I don't want her to have to share a room on a school field trip with anyone that my wife or I would object to. We greatly value her rights, security, and privacy, our rights as parents, and we will defend them. Now, other people have made suggestions of separate facilities, even retrofitting parts of the schools, and that is something that I think would work. Because as I've told a couple of the board members, I went to a school, they did not have doors on the stalls. And no little boy wants to go into the bathroom and have eighteen people look at it. So thank you for your time.
Thanks. Kevin and Melina, is that, woman is he, or is that Kevin Tinsley?
Hi. Kevin Tinsley, sixty-three eighteen, Headford Drive, Westchester, the daughter and the lessons due. Congratulations to the new board members. Thank you for all your hard work, Van Miller, everyone involved. Thanks a lot. You guys do a lot of hard work and thanks to all the teacher class and the work here tonight. So I just, I agree with everyone here as far as the policy. I didn't like the way it was written. I think we need to do better. And I want to thank you for, if the, the Lodi board is going to meet, get the, let's have the meetings out there. We want to be a part of it, we want to be included in it. We'll come together, we'll develop a policy that's going to protect our teachers too because I think that's very important, to protect the teachers. cause I think that's very important, to protect the teachers so that they have some clear rules and guidelines and are protected basically. So, but our main concern as a group here is privacy and security for children, all children. So I think we can come together and develop a policy that is gonna work. When we get into the meetings that I attend and report my opinions, I'm gonna focus on what someone else, Miss Daniels, I think, said is focusing on what the birth certificate says. If the state of Ohio recognizes a student as a certain sex, then I think we have to go by that until that transition is happened. Until that transition has happened, we have what's on paper, legally on paper. So that's, we're on that on that, and thank you again for all your hard work, appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Malina Seber, and I live at 5944 Dunmore Drive in Westchester. I have a daughter that is sixteen and a sophomore at Lakota East, and I have a son that just graduated from Lakota East this past year and about a tick. First, I would like to say that I believe that every single person in this room, whether they're an educator, a parent, a school board member, a staff member of some sort, has the best interest of all students in mind. I don't question anyone's motivations in this, okay? What I do question is policy. Lyndon earlier talked about how important it is to come together as a team. Whether that be on a soccer field, in a school board meeting, in a parent's room, in a classroom, that's still true. We do need to come together as a team. A person that was in favor of this policy spoke earlier and said it was important that all students have a right to privacy and safety. I couldn't agree more. My problem is that I believe that the policy that was proposed last month, School Board Policy 5000, did not do that for all students. Safety and privacy have to be a preeminent concern for any school board member or any school that is affecting a policy that will affect all students in their most intimate environment. My daughter, as a sixteen-year-old, I asked her about this policy because I didn't know what she would think about this kind of policy, how she would actually feel. I wanted to find out how my daughter would actually feel. Her very first statement to me was, Mom, I know for a fact there would be boys that would take advantage of this policy. And so, now, I know that our little angels would never do such a thing, but we have to face reality. Any policy that this school board or this school system will put in place that would increase the risk of some sort of safety or privacy concern for anyone, whether they be transgender or non-transgender, is a risk, and I don't think that that's worth taking. As Lori pointed out, there's an alternative of providing gender-neutral facilities for people, for anyone, whether they be transgender or non-transgender. I do wanna address something that I think is important for all of us to understand. This, what I'm thinking is not based upon my subjective feeling. I may subjectively have a feeling where I'm uncomfortable being in a room with somebody for reasons that could be good or reasons that could be bad. But my subjective feelings don't matter in those situations because everybody has equal access. What does matter is objective safety. And objectively speaking, the kind of policy that this board tried to implement last month is objectively not safe because you are exposing people unnecessarily to situations that can be abused. And in a school system this size, cannot be controlled well enough to prevent that abuse. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, and congratulations to our new board members. My name is Lyndon Nix, I live at 4243 Milliken Road. I am speaking in favor of policy. I don't need it now, I think it has to be a big policy that fits everyone. But some things that I would like to talk about are being transgender is not a choice. There's no such thing as choosing to be a sex. That's just, I'm just gonna leave it at that, it's not a choice. Any child that would choose to lead such a difficult life, nobody would choose that. Nobody would choose that, no family would choose that. But when it's something that is your true self, you have to figure out how to deal with it, and that's what we're trying to do. So, the other thing is that, um, we talked about sexual assault, and for transgenders, it's over, over half, fifty percent, transgender is sexually assaulted. And that happens at school also. So it's not assault, period, it's transgender is a much higher at-risk. So, you know, if you're talking about protection, you have to protect the transgender students also. But a single stall, while it sounds good, and I'm not opposed to a single stall, but you can't have one bathroom on a floor that 16,000 people can use and then you have no time for your five minutes between classes to use the restroom. And has, has anybody here been inside a locker room of the opposite sex? You don't even know, looked up recently though, right?
How recently?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I, I went to three different schools, I went to the locker rooms, I looked at different facilities, and there's definitely things that need to be changed and can be changed, but it's still, can work and everybody can have their own privacy, I feel very strongly that. And the only people that are going to abuse this are the people that would abuse other things. This, this, I don't even know how to start on this one, but, um, I'm also trying to think. There are opportunities out there for anybody to take advantage of the situation. At West, we've had three years of working one-on-one with all the staff, the principal. They know, they're not gonna just take the kid's word that they're transgender and they're gonna go to bathroom today, like they're gonna have a date and, you know, reach early or something, but it's just not how it's going to work. It's, it's a safety thing, yeah, but every child is going to be worked with by the staff. It's not gonna just be a free fall, that's just not gonna happen in this situation. I know that the principals will not allow it, and I know that, you know, the one person said that she's a high school student going to the bathroom, well, that was a year ago and you didn't stop it, I don't understand why you went to stop it, but the fact is, is that it happens and people are gonna do stupid things, and it's not going to put anybody off from being, um, a pedophile making a D2 on them. And besides that, this is a high school we're talking about. We're not talking about, you know, adults coming into the bathroom with these students, cause they're at school. Anyway, that's all.